No, Lee won't be here today.
Oh, so he's gotta be here.
Yeah.
Can I ask Catherine, um, have you heard anything about the Chipotle thing? And whether you're...
Nope.
From Roger?
No, um, I just wanted to share this piece of your voice.
So you're really missing a beer.
Yeah. We asked them that.
Why?
It was answered something.
Well, that's what I'm missing.
Well, that doesn't mean they're licensed for their restaurant.
What do we...
That's good, keeps me busy.
Well, for the beer.
Yeah, all the time.
I don't worry about my packet.
What kind of...
Yes.
Have you ever asked...
I'm glad you did all that preparation.
Yes.
Yeah.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk take the roll, please?
Mayor Bro?
Here.
Strip one, Marsete.
Here.
Two, O'Connell.
Here.
Three, Rodamacher.
Here.
Four, Wyland.
Wyland is not here.
Five, O'Malley. Uh, here.
Six, Cook. Here.
At this point in our agenda, we take comments and suggestions from citizens present for anything they would like to address the council on anything that's not on the tonight's agenda. Is there anyone that would like to address the council at this time? Oh, hi. Come on up. Didn't see you sitting there.
Good evening. How are you?
I'm Kim Heineman from the Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Bureau, and I just wanted to personally invite all of you, in addition to the viewing public, to our upcoming Christmas tour of homes. Um, I think this has been going on, well, this has been going on for many, many years, and this year we have five beautiful homes that you will all love to see in addition to the octagon house. Um, the dates of the event are November 18th and 19th, and that's Saturday and Sunday at craft sale up at the Hudson House on Saturday only. We are very excited about this, and we'd like everybody to obviously come. So come to the Chamber office or several different locations throughout town to purchase tickets. Um, the other thing I wanted to just mention is, um, we're very proud this year to have been part of a wonderful committee of local merchants who have really stepped up and put forth some huge effort to do, bring some Christmas activities to town in addition to the Chambers event. Um, we have Light Up Night, which is back, that's, um, November 24th at 7:00 PM. We have, uh, December 1st, uh, we have our candlelight stroll where downtown will be lit with luminaries, carriage rides, and all kinds of fun activities in town. And then on Saturday, December 2nd, uh, we will have reindeer and Santa in Lakefront Park. And this year, it's a much expanded event, um, all kinds of things to do for families. So we really want to get the word out and invite everybody to come and have some fun in Hudson. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else would like to address the council? Anyone? We have a special plaque presentation this evening to President of the Women's Club, Holly Richmond. And, uh, Holly, we're gonna present you with this plaque, and, uh, maybe you can just stand here so all the council's, uh, in the picture, okay? On behalf of the county council and citizens of the city of Hudson, we do have a 90th anniversary commemoration. Hudson Women's Club, for 90 years of operation, has a vital service club to our community, and we commend the members for their voluntary efforts in support of many charitable civic and patriotic projects since their first regular meeting held on January 17th, 1916. We further commemorate the occasion of the 90th anniversary and extend best wishes. And I know you want to talk a little bit about the Women's Club, and please, you have the TV audience to, uh, kinda express, uh, your objectives for this year. Holly Richmond.
As you just heard, Women's Club has been around for 90 years. Um, this year, we are celebrating in our next meeting, which is the 21st of November, at the FIP Center for the Performing Arts. Um, one of our new fundraisers that we have started is a collection of six artist note cards, donated artwork by six local women artists, and we are selling those at our meetings. Uh, we're gonna try and find some other venues as well. But Hudson's, Hudson Women's Club has also put together, um, an artful garden tour, which helps to benefit the city sidewalk baskets, and they were absolutely beautiful this year thanks to Dolores Tavola for, um, selecting the flowers and for the city as well for doing all the watering. They turned out very beautiful. We, uh, would invite everyone in the public to come to our next meeting. Um, like I said, it's the 21st of November, and we're doing an anniversary celebration to commemorate the beautiful plaque and, uh, our contribution to the city. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Holly. Anyone else? Uh, let's go to the consent agenda items, and Madam Court will vocalize those for us.
To approve the regular meeting minutes and closed session minutes of October 16th, 2006. To approve the proposed two-lot certified survey map located in the town of Troy as proposed by Lynn Tran and Thu Nugen. To approve claims for payment in the amount of $783,821.42. A detailed description is available in the clerk's office for inspection. To approve the revised position descriptions for the wastewater treatment plant operator and the wastewater treatment plant superintendent as submitted. To approve the request of Trinity Elementary School to change the parking signage on Fifth Street near the school to read "No Parking" 9:00 AM to 11:15 AM and 12:45 PM to 3:00 PM. To place on file the quarterly report of the library director and the community access board minutes of October 24th, 2006. That is all.
It is your pleasure on the consent.
Move to approve.
For a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Marsete?
Yes.
O'Malley?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Rodamacher?
Yes.
O'Connell?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Let's go to Plan Commission, uh, number two, the past, the master sign plan approval, FW Gordon, Aldi Foods, Northwest Quadrant, Hanley Road, and Carmichael Road.
Plan Commission recommendation is to approve the master sign plan for FW Gordon Retail Center and Aldi Foods with the following conditions: limited to one freestanding sign, not to exceed 135 square feet of signage for one side, and the sign not to exceed 30 feet in height. Aldi Foods to agree to deed restriction, which will preclude Aldi Foods from developing their own freestanding sign on their lot, and the wall signage will be restricted per municipal sign ordinance. As you understand, the intent of our revision of sign ordinance a few months ago is to allow a reduction in signage, or what we're gaining is a reduction in signage by allowing businesses to share signage along street frontages.
Move to approve the master sign plan as outlined by Denny with the conditions that he has just mentioned.
For a second?
I'll second that motion.
I think this has been a good program coming out of planning because, quite frankly, this has become the, the rule rather than the exception. Uh, it puts us in a position where we aren't gonna have a multi- multitude of lollipop, what I call, signs, and they're much more acceptable and certainly add to any project that, uh, they're trying to communicate, uh, what's in there and also, uh, the aesthetics of each sign, so.
We have an example of this already at Bantera Development.
Right.
Is this one gonna look a lot like that one?
Very much so.
Similar, yes.
Okay.
Maybe using similar materials as they're building and so forth, so complements their building architecture.
Okay.
Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Motion's carried. Let's go to three, request for land acquisition west of River City Center, north of Buckeye Street, and east of First Street, GCI Builders Incorporated.
If you had an opportunity to review my memo of 1023 to the Plan Commission, there were three alternatives on this issue that Plan Commission entertained. First was to sell property west of River City Center. Uh, second was to not sell any property. The third alternative, which was chosen by the Plan Commission, was to recommend to defer consideration and seal the city property with the premise that the building improvements must be located on the existing River City Center property. That consideration is, is that if the project would choose to move ahead, the city approved it or is in a, you know, goes through the concept approval, there may be areas just west that may complement the area but may not negatively affect the city property from potential of street relocation, street expansion considerations. Uh, I don't know if there's any particular questions you have tonight. I do not see GCI representatives here tonight. They were informed that this was gonna be discussed.
Well, I think the position that we took in the Planning Commission was basically to leave it open in case, uh, there was some land that would enhance this particular project, and so we can carry this over. Uh, as you know, we have 120-day moratorium, so we have lots of time to talk about the architecture, the height, various aspects of that particular project, and also whether or not this, uh, land acquisition, uh, by this development company is pertinent or not. I'll move the table this consideration until after the 120 days or sooner, under recommendation of the Plan Commission. I don't know if you'd like clarification on that.
I think table may not be the wording you wanna use.
For further consideration? Okay. For a second?
I'll, I'll second.
Any discussion or comments? Are we all ready? Madam?
Yes.
Okay, Arlen, favor?
Aye.
Close? Motion's carried. Thanks, Denny. Uh, why don't we just flip over to the backside here and go to new business? The petition of the Hudson School District to annex 41.993 acres from the town of Troy. Our usual position is to refer this to the Plan Commission, and, uh, the, uh, motion is in order.
I, I will move, uh, to refer this to Plan Commission with a special request that special attention be paid to analysis of wastewater needs for any school building that will be built there.
We'll do an analysis of all those requirements and also all of those costs.
I'll second that.
Denny? Denny, come?
Uh, just, if there's any questions, the council, also, there are representatives from the school district, if there's any questions, it's them. They're here tonight to answer any questions also.
No, we have Mr. Munich, Mr. Erickson, and Mr. Charney.
I guess one question would be, if the referendum should not pass, would you still want the annexation to occur? Or would you just take care of that at that time?
Doesn't look like they have an answer for that. Go with the flow.
Uh, to answer your question, it would be yes. Yes, we would prefer the annexation proceed.
Okay.
Any other questions, uh, council? All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Motion's carried. I didn't want you to sit here through our whole agenda, although I know you'd enjoy it, but...
Love him, love him.
Thank you. Let's go to Finance Committee. We have a notation, uh, elections and costs are not included in the 2006 budget, and Devon's going to highlight that for us.
Dennis had asked Nancy and I to check into what would be the, what would costs would be incurred by the city for these upcoming school district referendum. Um, all costs for the election workers, the ballots, the programming of the machines, all those type of costs are assessable back to the school district or any district that's having a special election. Um, the costs, if you will, that will be incurred would be staff time, meaning Nancy, I, and Chrissy, whatever time we'd have involved. Um, we're being paid anyway, but it would just be basically our time that we could be doing something else. We'd be doing that. It will be less obvious, we would anticipate, than what we had with this November election here. In April and September, that ran about $1,250 to $1,300 was the time that was allocated from our wages to the elections, so. So Dennis was just inquiring about that, and so that's, but the bulk of the costs are charged back to the school district, or to any district.
So it's informationally. If you have any questions, uh, you can, uh, talk to Devon about any particulars, uh, later on. Let's go to number six, request to Mark Christopherson, DBA Golf Links for an ordinance to create a new class of beer license for his establishment at 2110 Webster Street. Would, uh, would you like to, uh, comment on your...
Uh, sure.
Memorandum?
Everyone got my memo, um, about the request, and I guess the one thing I did want to make sure the council understood was that the situation that's provided for in state law, a revenue department issued permit, is different than the situation presented in the city of Hudson. And as stated in my memo, those categories would not apply anyway to this operation. Um, and that whole permit system only applies in a municipality that does not issue, um, alcohol or Class B beer licenses. So it's kind of a odd, unique permit system that doesn't really apply. Um, basically, it's the same question as was presented before. Do you want to create another category of businesses that would be eligible for Class B beer? Um, the difficulty I see is just defining that and explaining why certain types of businesses, even within that golf, tennis, curling, ski jumping, yachting, why those are appropriate for a Class B beer and other types of indoor recreational businesses are not. And it's the discussion the council had before on opening the door, and if you have questions, um, I'm happy to answer them. I don't, uh, see anything substantively new, but I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
If we created that new license, couldn't we just issue one?
You, well, no. I mean, it's subject to the quota, but you cannot just issue, create an ordinance that is specific to allow one business to operate. What you're doing when you're adopting an ordinance is you're saying, you're setting the rules for any business, um, that wants to apply for a Class B beer, so...
We can set our quota, 'cause we, we do that right now.
Well, you have a quota, you'd have, but you can't say that this would, I mean, the quota changes with population. It changes, well, the availability of a beer license would change with, if a business goes out of business. So you really need to separate yourself, I think, from the specific situation at hand and decide, as you did before, or look at what are the policy considerations. That's what you're deciding when you make an ordinance regarding, well, anything, but specifically regarding alcohol. Anyone who, you know, came in and had a business would be able to apply for a license under that category and assuming one's available. So you can't create a specific license for one business.
Catherine, what is your opinion, or your fundamental, I guess, disagreement with the ordinance that was presented from their attorney?
I think the difficulty, the two, the two things I have concerns about are, um, you've gotta have an ordinance that has a rational basis, and so picking out these particular types of recreation businesses and saying they're appropriate for a Class B beer license where perhaps a video arcade could, is similar, why that would not be appropriate. Someone could come in with a equal protection type argument or just a rational basis type argument, that there's nothing substantively different between those businesses and my business. I mean, maybe there would be, but it's just difficult to define. That's one problem. The other issue just is, um, as you looked at before, minors on the prem, I mean, it's just, do you want these types of businesses that are very in, you know, they're different from a restaurant, they vary in their atmosphere, and there's minors on the premises. Do you want to have those types of businesses have alcohol licenses? And that's not a question for me to answer. I don't have a, that's a question for you folks to answer.
Well, there's, there's an example of a tennis club in Mankato, Minnesota, that has this exact type of situation, and there is no problems whatsoever with that type of...
Well, the other thing, those are clubs. I mean, they're not open to the public, and that's a...
It is open to the public.
Well, I, legally, you can, there's no problem with it. I just want you to be aware of the issues. There's minors on the premises, the management, the type, arrest, I mean, there's just, it's a much wider variety of types of businesses that may be able to obtain that license. If you're fine with that, that's, that's okay. There's nothing unlawful about it.
I think we take that risk every time we issue a license.
That discussion should happen, yeah, amongst you folks, because it's a policy consideration, not, not a, not for me to decide. I just point out the issue, that, that's an issue, I see.
Catherine, if we pass that particular ordinance, would there be difficulty in establishing what is recreational, what is not recreational? What types of, uh, comments would we get into?
Well, under the ordinance that's proposed, it's only, um, golf, tennis, curling, ski jumping, and yachting. What is likely, or what could happen, is that someone would say, what is the rational basis for allowing those businesses and not some other type of indoor recreational business? A video arcade, a pool hall, uh, what have you? I don't have it all at my fingertips, but you see what I mean. There's other types of indoor recreational businesses, and then the city would be in the position of trying to articulate why these are different.
Why these are the exception.
Why these are different and okay and good to have, you know, licensed, and those other types of businesses aren't. For instance, a pool hall.
Well, Catherine, the Department of Revenue, which would, uh, which takes care of these licenses, has already given you an opinion that golf is a sport, simulated indoor golf, they would not issue or allow us to issue a license for. Is that not correct?
They, well, no. It's not that they don't allow the city to issue a lic, the city has the authority to adopt this ordinance. That, that's what I'm trying to explain. The Department of Revenue permit system is unique, only, it's only applicable in areas that do not issue Class B beer licenses. It only applies to private clubs, not businesses open to the, so that permit really has nothing to do with what the city does here. The Department of Revenue, um, has nothing to say about what the city does here. These types of businesses are authorized under the statute to have a Class B beer license if the city chooses to allow that. The city has in its ordinance right now, the restaurant, that it has, it's only to be issued to licensed restaurants. But these, the statute allows recreation premises to be issued Class B beer licenses. So it's just a policy consideration, the same discussion that was held before. And my difficulty legally is, there's other types of indoor recreation businesses that I have trouble distinguishing from an indoor simulated golf business.
Can't the, uh, like, different business in the future come and petition to amend the ordinance at that time?
Certainly, but I guess, I prefer that the city make a policy decision that these are the types of businesses that are appropriate to have a Class B beer license. But, yeah, the, the city can always consider amending its license or amending its ordinance.
I just can't see anything wrong with the way this is written in Section 4C. I, to me, that covers this.
Well, I give you a suggestion. It is an electronic game.
Right.
No different from pinball machines, no different from video arcades. It's, those are all electronically operated games as well. It's not golf, it's an electronic game. If you craft an ordinance that allows electronic games, because Mr. Radozovich's suggestion does not cover this, he says golf, this is not golf, this is an indoor electronic game. And if you change the ordinance to allow indoor electronic games, then anybody who wants to open, um, some electronically operated indoor venue is going to be able to apply for a beer license, and maybe that's not what we want.
But don't you think we would make those decisions as they come?
No, because it's an ordinance. An ordinance has to be crafted and so that it fits the entire class. We're not gonna be going through this exercise every time somebody wants to open up a business establishment. It's an ordinance to cover the entire city.
This would have to be more, be more specific, like indoor/outdoor golf, indoor/outdoor tennis.
Well, I think you'd have to specifically say including simulate, indoor simulated versions thereof or something to that.
Well, they're electronic games.
Well, but what you're saying is indoor simulated golf is appropriate for a Class B beer, pool is not. And I don't know what other forms of indoor simulated recreational activities there are, but you are only allowing golf or tennis, curling, ski jumping, yachting. So indoor/outdoor simulated real, these are what you're allowing, and you're putting yourself in a position where you have to justify, um, why is, are those indoor/outdoor simulated or non-different from other simulated type indoor games?
Because we've said so.
That's not a good enough reason.
That's when you get sued, Dennis. That's when we all get sued.
So...
Now that we've had our summary, uh, discussion, I'm looking for a motion.
I will move again.
We hear from the...
During the discussion time.
Yeah, I, I will, again, move that, we have, we have to deny this application based on Catherine's points.
Is there a second for discussion?
I'll second.
Okay, we're in discussion. We had some based on our summary. Mr. Christopherson would like to address the, the council.
Thank you very much. Um, first, I'd like to, uh, Allyn O'Malley, address your statement regarding electronic golf. I'm, I'm just curious, have you been up to my facility? Are you, are you aware of how it works?
I have seen it work in other places, not at your facility.
Okay, so you are familiar that you do actually use your own clubs, your own golf ball, your swinging club, just like you are outdoors. The only thing is, you're hitting into a screen.
And how does that differ from using your own hands to operate a pinball machine?
There's more physical activity involved.
Oh, that really wouldn't fit this ordinance, would it?
Well, you, you, you just asked me a question, and I gave you my answer.
Bring your own clubs, you bring your own hands to the pinball machine. It's, 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 uh, essentially the same thing, Mr. Christopherson.
Well, and you're entitled to your opinion.
We understand both your points. Why don't you make your additional point?
Um, basically, what I'd like to say, the, regarding, um, the city attorney's memo, and the, the length of which was, uh, the club issue was addressed, you know, nowhere in our, nowhere in the letter from my attorney or in the ordinance do we discuss, you know, becoming a club or attempting to get a permit through the state. We were just attempting to use the state statutes and the wordings in the state statutes to construct an ordinance that would not only include my business, and I noticed on the agenda, it states, it's for my business, I'm trying to include a lot of other types of businesses. Now, Mr. Radozovich stated that to us, that when this ordinance was originally enacted back in, was it 1985, 1986, that my, the type of business that I have and some other types of businesses, they had no idea would exist. And, and, and so I believe that, um, councils, and I, and I, and I'm not saying that you don't, but I believe councils have, you know, we have to adapt to the changing times. And different types of recreation and different types of activities are going to be created today, tomorrow, and 10, 15 years from now. Now, the, the ordinance that we're amending, or that we're proposing amending, um, is to allow the legally, the legal classifications that the state legislature has approved. And, and I believe the city attorney addressed that in golf, tennis, curling, ski jumping, and yachting. Those are right there in the state statutes. Um, I'd like to also address the issue of, um, minors in the facility. Um, restaurants, there are plenty of minors that, that are in restaurants and are sitting at the table with their parents drinking beer. My, you know, my facility is not a raucous bar. I'm not, I'm not in business to be a bar, a beer bar. I'm in business, I have, I don't know how many of you have been up there, I have each simulator booth... I don't know how many of you have been up there, I have each simulator booth, there's a table with four chairs in front of it, like you would find in, sometimes in a restaurant. And I have a, I have a large screen TV with a few lounge tables for people to, to sit if they wanted to have a beer. And frankly, when I put together my business plan and I put together the whole plan, I was thinking I would have more activity of people after they're done playing golf, sitting in front, watching a football game, whatever, having some more beer. That hasn't happened. I very rarely get people sitting there. They come in, they play their golf, they, they pay, and they leave. As far as the minor issue, the state has addressed not only the minor issue, but also as it relates to indoor golf simulator facilities in Section 12507. Section B 33. Section three goes through the presence and places of sale and penalty restrictions regarding minors. And then it goes on to state that this paragraph does not apply to, and then under number three, hotels, drugstores, et cetera, et cetera, indoor golf simulator facilities. So the state has already addressed the issue of minors within indoor golf facilities. Now, I know that where I've had minors in there, I've had birthday parties. And what happens is the kids come up, they play a little golf, we can hook up their video games to the simulator so they can play their video games on this, on the nine by 11-foot screen, and they love it. And the, the parents bring the food and the cakes and the pop, and, and the comments that I've gotten from people who have had parties there really appreciate the fact that they have an alternative to the bowling alley. Because it seems like the only place they can have kids' birthday parties around here is the bowling alley, and they really appreciate the alternative. Now, a couple other points, and then I'll, and then I'll be done. But I would like to just emphasize that my business plan, when I created this, relied on the city approving a, a beer license. That was the first step. After the first step was, was approved, then the next step was to make the commitment to spend a quarter of a million dollars on my simulators. Point, my, my second point is that with the closure of a similar facility in West St. Paul this year, my business is expected to grow, it's, expected to grow this year because people on the east side of the Twin Cities, Woodbury, West St. Paul, don't have a place to go over there anymore. And I was planning on increased business from them. Without having that license, yes, I may get them, but I don't think I'll get them as repeat customers over and over again. Because I've had many, many comments from, from my customers. They, they like the atmosphere, it's not a rowdy bar atmosphere, they're having fun playing golf, it's a winter activity that keeps their golf game going, and they like, a few of them, not all of them, but a few of them like to have a beer while they're playing. Now, finally, the city can be proud of my business. As I've operated it for two and a half years, I've not had any problems with, with, you know, police calls, drunken routing ness. And I think that when you granted the license two and a half years ago, you basically, there was a precedent set that my customers appreciate and would like, would like to see continue. Thank you very much.
Does the council have any questions, Mr. Christoffersen, before he--
I would like to mention that, Mr. Christoffersen, I, I've heard what you say, you just had to say, and I believe everything you say. I believe you probably run a very good establishment. You, you have to understand that this ordinance is not going to mention your business anywhere in it. This is not about your business, specifically your business. This is about a type of business.
Mm-hmm.
You mentioned that people bring their own golf clubs. A person who wants to put in a billiard hall, and there is such a person in this city, could say, well, my, my customers will bring their own billiard cubes. What's the--
However, billiards is not, billiards, I, I'm sorry, billiards is not included in this ordinance.
But you understand that, as you said yourself, you're relying on the state statute, and this is, this is really not going to be based on the state statute. This is going to be based on the city of Hudson.
No, I understand that.
As our city attorney has pointed out. Now, there have been some people here on the council have mentioned, we can revisit this for the next business that wants to open. And believe me, there would be another one very soon. Now, I've not asked our city attorney, Catherine Monchitric, but I'm willing to bet that she would not deny that we're into paying her for this research. The word thousands would come up, okay? And I'm not willing to spend my neighbor's money every time somebody wants to open a business that would maybe fit under this ordinance and maybe not. Or to pay any city attorney thousands to defend an ordinance, which she points out would be hard to defend. It may be difficult to explain, as she says, why an indoor simulated golf establishment should be eligible for a beer license and not a video arcade, billiards establishment, or some other similar type of indoor recreation business. I'm not willing to spend my neighbor's money to find that out. Again, this has nothing to do with your business. This is, has to do with the nature of how we're going to license here in the city of Hudson. So please don't take it personally.
No, I'm not taking it personally. I am--
I believe that this is what we must do. We must deny your license because it doesn't fit our existing ordinance.
Does any other councilperson have any questions to Mr. Christoffersen? Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just make one comment on his comments? As far as the club, my purpose in referring to that was to explain how limited that state permit is. It's only available to private clubs that are not open to the public, and that we have a different situation here in the city of Hudson in that we're adopting an ordinance that's applicable to public businesses. I wasn't trying to infer that he's trying to be a club or anything like that, just to explain the different--
I don't believe I said anything that--
Application of-- Yeah, no, Mr. Christoffersen, so I just wanted--
Everybody understand, we have a motion before us to deny. Are we ready for the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay. I, nay.
Three to two.
Well, we cannot adopt an ordinance.
Well, maybe you need some direction as to what you're doing.
Yes, what's next?
I think the request was to consider amending the ordinance, the code, to have these types of classifications. So what you could do is direct, if this is what the council wants to do, is direct me to, I think this ordinance needs some tweaking to include, I take it you want to include indoor simulated, I mean, maybe, back up, maybe you should make a motion if you want to direct me to draft an ordinance based on this, but if you need more--
Does that have to be publicized too, that ordinance?
Well, that would be on the next agenda, and then we'd go through the regular, either suspend the rules or not, have first reading, second reading. It would be po, on the agenda as an ordinance amendment.
Anyone willing to make an, a motion based on what--
I'll move. I'll move to recommend city council, or city attorney draft an ordinance to include simulated golf under four, 14520 4C.
For a second.
You just want simulated golf in that ordinance? I would have concerns about that as being special legislation for a single business. You're looking at, do you see the ordinance that Mr. Radoz--
Yeah.
It would be basically this, but if you're trying to accommodate indoor simulated versions of these recreation activities, we'd need to include that language.
Want to change your motion to include that?
Sure.
Is there a second?
I'll say.
Discussion. Where have we had it?
I think we've had it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay. No.
Three to two. Motion's carried. Uh, let's go to, the next two items are to review the bids under seven for Lakefront Park Beach House reciting project, and number eight for Lakefront Park Wall expansion project. And I'll read those to you. And in our finance committee, we recommended that we take these up in full council. The first one is the Lakefront Park Beach House reciting. There were two bids, and one was from Northern Environmental for $214,794. Oh, I'm sorry, for the wall. $214,794.50, and WW Grading is 169,310.50. And I think we should have a motion to approve those based on the fact that we will have the money, and we will have a meeting regarding that. But I think that should be a motion with that type of contingency, because we got to look at all of the bonding, if bonding is involved here, against all of the requests that we're getting from the entire city. In other words, this is one leaf on the tree.
Mr. Mayor, how long do we have before we have to--
Sixty days.
So we could wait on this until we have our bonding meeting, couldn't we? We could have--
Yes, we could.
We could have this figure in front of us when we discuss our, all of our bonding at once.
We could put it under consideration for all the bonding under the capital projects.
I'd like to make that motion. We put these, put this under consideration, this one, the wall, under consideration when we consider all of our bonding requests.
For a second.
I will second him so that we can have a discussion, and I think Jim's about to start that.
This one is bonded for. This was bonded for in the 2005, 2006 bonding. So this one, we have funding in place for this.
Oh.
The discussion, what it revolves around, we have $350,000 for the wall, or 300? 350. And what we were looking at doing was utilizing the, some of the excess money from the bonding for some of the additional work to, uh, walk, River Walk, the building at the end of the dyke.
Have you identified those yet?
We have, we have that identified. Paul has the, I think between Paul and Betty, they've gotten the, the final numbers there. And it looks--
We had a lengthy, I'm sorry, Jim.
Go ahead.
We had a lengthy park board meeting last night, and one of the motions for recommendation was to approve the bid by, submitted by--
WW Grading.
WW--
Grading.
Grading, thank you. And--
Yeah, as long as in last year's bonding--
Come out of bond, bonding, and park board is 100 percent, you know, in favor of the--
Want to change your--
Yes, since we, that's already been paid for, basically. Yes.
One has been approved.
I'll move that we approve the bid to WW Grading for 169,310.50.
Would you, I'll second that if you'll include the contingencies, the receiving the list of approved materials and subcontractors.
We have received those.
You have already, and they are meeting your approval?
Yes.
Okay, and I'll just second your motion.
When I, when I wrote the memo, I didn't have them yet. I subsequently got them.
Danny's going to back you up on this?
Finance, agree?
Be okay.
I agree. This money needs to be spent within three or three months.
Okay, so this moves us on. Okay, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried.
You want to talk about the bathhouse, Jim?
What's the next one?
Who's got questions?
Don.
Mine up here.
Before you can discuss the bathhouse and, and going further on, on the wall, I'd like maybe Betty to explain. We have a, a sheet here which explains parks, projects, expenditures, and funding so that everybody understands where we're coming from before we take one at a time and get them out of place. And then--
That's what I don't like, right?
So let's, let's, let's find out where the funding is, then let's discuss the projects as, as the park board saw fit last night. We had a two and a half hour meeting, which was very productive. It was, everything went into considerable detail with the help of Angela, and Jim, and Betty, and Debbie. So, but it was a very extensive meeting, a lot of questions, and very thorough, I think. I think when we get down to the bottom here and, and you see what the expenditures are. I'm going to let Betty explain it, because she's used to doing it to you guys. I know where they are, and I'll explain why.
Betty, is this a new one?
This is a new one from the old one I gave you. Yes.
Okay. What's the old one? Is that this one?
No, no, that wasn't, that was from Deb, that first summary. Um, last night they had a big discussion about all the capital outlay, and there's been a lot of projects that are on the, on the horizon, and, and how are they going to fund them? And they've been floating money between, if we do this, can we do this? And I think a lot of that discussion took place last night. I wasn't present, but I did review what Deb had today and what she presented to you, found just a little bit of difference in our engineering costs. But I put them into this worksheet, and I think that it's pretty close. As long as we stay on budget on this and we don't do overruns, we'll be fine. One of the things I'll go through from the beginning, in the River Walk project, there's basically three parts of it. There's the lighting, there's the park shelter, and there's the water and the sewer. When we put all those together, we have a total of about $534,000. This does not include, I know one of the things that the council was looking at before was the safety gates. The safety gates will come in later, and I'll discuss that in a minute. But at this point, it's $534,000. With that, we have bonding. We bonded $100,000 for the lights and $50,000 for the park shelter. We have a DNR grant for $100,000. Rotary is giving us matching funds of $50,000. And then we have miscellaneous donation accounts that we're using of $61,000. So we have funding of about $361,000, and we're short $172,000 to do this project. What they are looking at doing is with the wall, because it came in much less than they had planned, there's approximately $145,000 left over on that project that they want to apply against this $172,000. When they do that, the park board shows about a $27,000 deficit. And Don can explain what they're thinking on funding that deficit at this point. What they have done now is looked at some of the projects that they were going to do and moved them into a 2007 bonding request. One of them is for the beach house, the reciting of the beach house and, and the safety gates on those. That's about approximately $150,000. Grandview irrigation is $40,000. And then the rolling service stores on the River Walk project is another $40,000. These were the requests that they're adding to their 2007 bonding requests. These are the ones that we'll have to look at as a possibility or non-possibility with our budget for 2007. With that, Don can talk to you about the $27,000, the shortfall, and where that will come from.
In the, in the discussions, what we did is we set some priorities on what we wanted and what we did not want as a board. And which would come first, the River Walk, the lighting, the sewer and water. Do we want to do it without sewer and water? Do we have dry toilets out there? Do we want to do it right? Do we want to have a steel roof? Or do we want to have asphalt roof? Do we want to make it look right? Or do we want brick walls or have a decent looking building out there? All those were priorities and were set down. And also with the bathhouse, where that fell into it. The bathhouse is existing. We can live with it for a year or two, till we can find funding to recite it. Maybe not a $125,000 reciting job, it may be a $60,000 reciting job if it didn't have to have the, the roof and everything else on it at one time. So those are some of the priorities, the way we looked at it. The sewer was a $150,000 addition, but they thought that was the right way to go between the discussions with Jim and Angela, the engineering firm, and other board members. Rather than pumping it twice a week and paying those expenses, blowing them out every year, and hoping they don't freeze, and so on and so forth, and flooding situation. So those were some of the priorities and the way they were arrived at. If you have any questions on how they arrived at, Paul or myself or Pat, who's also a member of the park board meeting, also a Rotarian, and I'll tell you why that's important in the next situation here. The funding was $27,000 short approximately. Actually, it was almost $50,000. What we said we would do is we would take $25,000 from our-- Park A Trust. I can never remember if it's A or B. Park A Trust, which is at the north side of the 94-- Park A Trust, which is at the north side of the ninety-four, which is approximately a hundred thousand dollars. We would take $25,000 of that. We have three Rotary's members on park board. They came to a possibility, or brought up the possibility, that Rotary would possibly match that. Whether they will or will not, they have to go to their boards, and we couldn't get that done before today. So what we decided we would do, and said what we would do, that if they do or do not make a match, that they would come up with some dollar figure. And what that would be, they didn't know at the time, okay, and that we couldn't have it for the, tonight. What we said we would do, we would cover that so that we can get these bids out, and it doesn't go up $50,000 before next year, all this process. Get it underway, that we would cover that $25,000 out of our north trust fund, until Rotary came up with the dollars that they would come up with. What they would come up with possibly, out of their own funds, would be one thing, but they would go out and raise the balance of that $25,000, either from Marina Groups, up and down the river, but they would raise that $25,000. The other $2,000, Betty thought she could make up out of interest that she's acquired from having those funds for the last two years, or year and a half, or whatever it is.
So when it's all said and done, you're going to have about $575,000 in that building?
No, about $392,000. That's without the rolling doors, and, um-
With the lighting, the park shelter, and the water and sewer?
The lighting, the lighting, the lighting would be there with or without the building. That, that was a bonded part, which we were six or seven thousand dollars short, which we took out of a donations fund to make up the difference. That was there with or without the building, so I, I don't include that in the building.
So it's four hundred and fifty, whatever.
Yeah, and, and you, the sewer and water, was whether you do it, or do it right, or do it half. You know, we want to do it right or, or not. That's, again, priorities, and that's, the board made that decision on whether they wanted to go, and they wanted to go with the, the sewer and water, and have it active. Yes, it, it does total up to that amount, and the rolling service doors, um, we haven't come to an agreement that that would be the type of door we'd use, but we do have dollars on what it would be. We do think that's, that's probably going to be a required thing, but before we put doors on it, if there was vandalism there, we could say, this is why the doors are on it. We don't want any more.
It would give you some protection.
If you're, if you're inside, you're now liable, if you're inside those doors. And, and we think they'll have to come at some time, but when we do it, we'd also like to put it on the bathhouse, to close that bathhouse, so those doors don't get busted in as well. So that, that includes both the bathhouse and the shelter, the, the bonding request that we have in there. The Grandview irrigation is, Grandview field, one of the fields is irrigated. All the valving is in for the other three fields. This would be the balance of the other three fields being done, okay? The beach house reciting, that's a total with roof, hardy board on the upper part, stone on the lower part. There's, there's any number of ways that we could do that siding project. It may or may not be a hundred and twenty-five, it may be sixty, it may be a hundred, you know. So anyway, but that's what we, that's the request, and, and that's where those dollars are. I just, we, we said not to, we made a recommendation not to do the bathhouse siding, so that is part of the park board recommendation, so if you want to, however you want to handle that.
Requesting a hundred and twenty for the bathhouse reciting-
Bonded-
Bonding for next year.
In the next two year, two years down the road.
Well, I think this is a great summary, this is what I was looking for. It's not on the agenda for approval. The only thing on the agenda for approval is the, the park board house, the beach house reciting project, right?
Um, I'm not sure how the agenda reads, I don't have the agenda in front of me. But if, if you want, if the shelter was on the agenda, then, I just wanted you to know how we came up with the dollars, where the dollars were coming from.
And that's good.
Okay?
Well, the, the bid is on the agenda, and Angela's pro, you know-
Oh yeah, we can handle a bit. I'm just saying, this summary-
That's correct.
Is new news.
That's correct.
It, it certainly answers a lot of questions that we all had.
Yeah.
I think this is great, and I think we should either put this on as a full recommendation in our next council meeting, or a special council meeting, so that we can put it to bed forever.
Appreciate, appreciate your time.
After we could have joint park board council meetings prepared, so that everybody is completely on the same page with this.
Sure. Well, this is the start of it, and it's a good report, and I appreciate Betty for putting that together. But the question before the house here is to review the bid submitted for the Lakefront Park Beach House reciting project, right?
Correct.
Okay, need-
Move to deny the bid due to lack of funding.
I'll second it, Don just asked us to.
Yep.
Good. We had a second?
Yeah.
Good. I think we're all in concert, finally. All in favor?
Aye.
Me, me, me.
Close? Whoa, it's scary. Okay, thank you. Thank you for that extra effort in putting that together, Don, Betty, and Paul. Let's go to nine, application to Coop Enterprises LLC for Class B Beer and Class C Wine License. Coop's Pizza at eight sixteen Carmichael Road. Recommendation from finances to approve that request and that application.
I'll renew my motion to approve.
Can I make one suggestion? Just in view of what we've gone through, I think it would be helpful to have him provide his restaurant license, so that we're sure, for Class B Beer and Class C Wine, that's a requirement under the ordinance.
Want to include that in here?
And that's for, I think that should happen for all applications, so that that's just a matter of check.
We don't have that yet, but as soon as I get it, I'll provide a copy.
And the issuance would be contingent on that, because that's a requirement of our ordinance.
I have that license in order to open it, so.
Okay.
I've not got, just, I started.
Just so everything's in sequence.
We'll make sure we have that.
Need a second to the-
Well, let me amend the motion, I'll amend the motion to make it contingent upon issuance of the restaurant license.
Sorry, I thought you were going to-
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Are you none, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, motion's carried. Let's go to ten. Thank you, and good luck. Review the rent lease amounts for offices in the municipal building, nine eleven Fourth Street. There was a recommendation from finance to raise the square footage up to fourteen fifty. However, after some discussion with our attorney, she recommended what she's just going to say.
Well, the sheet you have before you gives you the annual operating costs and the square footage allocated to all the separate entities that use that municipal building. It does not include in the allocation the city's use of the building for courtroom and clerk of court. And in terms, and the effort was to get the revenue to equal the annual operating costs. I think some of the annual operating costs should be allocated to the courtroom, so that the other entities aren't, I mean, the city is using that building, so.
What would you recommend?
And I don't know what the square footage of the courtroom is, but maybe Devon can help on that.
Well, we were just looking, if you went, you know, at the thirteen dollar per square foot, that would be about a seventeen thousand dollar difference. And I would guess that the area of the court is similar, probably what the Channel fifteen has, it's not as much as the library, you know, and theirs would be eighteen, so, you know, I, I would think thirteen would give a fair share to the courtroom and to the municipal court.
Well, it'll put us a lot closer.
Well, yes, and I, and I will change my motion from finance from fourteen and a half per square foot to thirteen dollars per square foot. I'll save discussion till we have a second.
I'll second.
Discussion.
I am loath to charge nonprofits more money for the space that they use from the city, but the fact of the matter is, it puts the city in an untenable position. We're not able, we cannot be in the position of favoring some charities over others, because they just happen to be residents of a building we own. We can't operate this building at a loss, not only for the reason I just stated, but also for the fact we just don't have the money to do that anymore. So we're going to have to move them from the current eight dollars to thirteen dollars a square foot.
Discussion. We're going to get some phone calls on this one, but quite frankly, we're in a position with our budget, and I want to basically talk to the TV audience. We were able to increase our audience, our budget by about, approximately a hundred and sixty-eight thousand.
Yeah, something like that.
Ninety thousand dollars came in for the increase in insurance, which doesn't leave a lot of additional monies for any commitment we had for raises and that sort of thing, correct?
Right.
We've kind of been inkinding that particular building. We were at six dollars and went to eight dollars-
Two years.
Two years ago. But when you look at the bottom line, and you take each piece of, of our budget, we can't continue to subsidize that building, not just for the library, but the additional people that are nonprofits that are in there. I think it's a good fiscal planning, and I'm sure the library is going to give us a call, but we are only one member of that joint library, and I think that we're going to have to basically increase for the budget restrictions that we have. Any, anybody else want to make any comments? You were on the library board, Mr. O'Connell was on the library board, so I'll refer those calls to you guys.
Actually, if anybody would care to loan me a football helmet for the meeting I'm going to attend next Monday, that would come in handy.
Viking or backup?
I can honestly say the library board knew they were getting a good deal.
Oh, yes.
Yes.
They, you know, but we can't, like you said, as a city, we can't be losing money, especially this year.
Are they tied in leases? Excuse me? Lease?
We have a month, all of those, we have a month-to-month lease with all of them.
Because the library, the joint library is looking for other facilities, we didn't think we should tie them up to a long-term lease, and that we moved in that direction, what, a year ago?
Mm-hmm, and we did that with all of the tenants that way.
So what happens if we lose some of this, some of these nonprofits, and we have an empty building? Do we increase?
Well, we have one, and I can't remember, I believe it's Community Action, I believe, is on a waiting list for additional offices now, unless they would be the one that, you know, I suspect that this rate is probably pretty good. Compared to what is out there for- I could, I can do that for you, Devon, to put this in perspective, the rate that they have in pain is less than you would pay for unheated warehouse here in the county, with no janitorial services, no lights, no heat, no nothing.
I think it's important to say that we are operating the ability at a sixty-three thousand dollar a year deficit.
Right.
So it's not five dollars, it's sixty-three thousand.
It's something that's very difficult to absorb. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, motion's carried. Let's go to the back page. Public Safety Committee Traffic Safety Issue at Crestview Drive and Hagan Street intersection. Paul, you want to give us?
Yeah, we have some problems at this intersection, primarily with people driving east on Crestview, taking a left turn on Hagan, and heading north. That traffic merging with the traffic going westbound on Hagan, hitting that yield sign, going, and joining on the bridge, going north on, to Hagan Street, Crestview to Hagan. There seems to be like a blind spot there, or, or a lack of, of yielding there to people who are coming off of Hagan, and want, or off of Crestview, want to go onto Hagan. So what the Public Safety Committee has recommended to the councils, that we add a sign underneath the yield sign at this corner that just says, "Yield to All Traffic" at this location, plain and simple.
I just have a question, both lights are green, right, east and west?
Mm-hmm.
The eastbound car, turning north, would have the right away, correct? Because the westbound car turning left is crossing the right.
That's not correct, because they need to yield at that, at that particular location.
But they have a green light in front of them.
The sign says yield, and they need to yield at, right at that location.
I will move for approval of the addition of the wordage, "to all traffic."
I'll second that. And actually, Dennis, you've exactly hit on the point why there's a problem there, is because people think, I'm turning right, I don't have to yield. Well, you do have to yield at this location.
I want to give a green light, I look at the green light.
Has that been okayed by the acting chief of police?
Yes, I sat in the meeting, we discussed that, that issue. Because of the fact of that yield sign there, that takes precedence over that, over that green light. That was a regular intersection, where you had a right-hand turn light on a green light, or if you allowed them to turn right on a red, yeah, they would take precedence over another traffic coming from the opposite direction, making a left-hand turn. But due to the fact of the engineering of that intersection, and we have a couple of other intersections just like that in this city, that yield sign is the one that takes precedence of all vehicles moving in that direction that they have to yield to.
Okay.
Jim, before you make comment, just procedurally, to allow discussion, did I get a second?
Yes.
Oh, okay, thank you.
You can't qualify a yield sign. It's yield, and that's it. Yield is the most restrictive sign there is, because if you're involved in an accident, you had a yield sign, you didn't yield, you're guilty. End of story. You can't say, "Yield to All Traffic," or, "Yield to Red Cars," or whatever, it has, it's yield, period. And that is the most restrictive.
Right, and that, but as Dennis pointed out, people think, well, I'm turning right, I don't have to yield, I'm agreeing. Well, that's why we're saying that you have to yield to all traffic.
Need more help?
Hopefully that will help.
Well, it's, it's, I mean, the thing is, it's, it's, it's against the law, the standards for signage, to, to qualify that, I mean-
You mean, two signs on one pole?
Right, I mean, it's, it has to be just a yield sign, which, I mean, the thing is, we may want to stick an informational sign further up the road coming up there, but at the intersection, it has to be a pure yield sign.
Okay. Did you guys discuss this in your committee, or?
We did, and I guess we didn't realize that was the case. So, we did talk about having a sign up, you know, a hundred feet or whatever from that location, but-
Paul and I can talk about it and get it resolved, this is not insurmountable.
It's not insurmountable.
We've got to change our motion then, don't we?
Well, it, it fails.
Yeah.
Goes against either standards and practices or statute, whichever Jim was quoting.
You want to-
So I'll rescind.
Okay, is that okay with the second? All right? You guys figure it out.
We'll work on it.
We'll work on it.
Chief involved, the reason I wanted to get you involved, because I wanted to avoid any phone calls that you were going to get tomorrow regarding this subject. Okay, update on projects. Angela.
We've talked about quite a few of the public projects I want to cover. The only thing I do want to state on those public projects are that we can hold bids for sixty days until they expire. So I have listed the expiration dates, for lack of better words, on the shelter project and the lighting project, so I just want to make you aware of those. And on the final page, really, not a whole lot, things are obviously getting wrapped up because of the weather, but on the final page, the Banterah North, which is where the Citizen State Bank is going, they are working hard to get that, the public and private portions of the streets done, and then also the Citizen State Bank actual site, Zappa Brothers is installing the utilities, and they are working on the foundation, so that's moving quite quickly.
Any questions, Angela?
Well, given that we've outlined the funding for these other two projects that are under bid timelines, shall we proceed with, or can we proceed with?
They're not on the agenda. Madam Counsel?
What are you trying to proceed with, Mel?
With accepting bids.
Oh, that's not on the agenda. That was deferred, wasn't it, at the last council meeting?
It was, yes, it was.
Oh, it would, if you're going to bring it back, it would have to be on the agenda.
Because we're, we're getting many parts of the elephant, and never looking at the visionary statue of the total elephant, I'd like to have a special council meeting, so that we can take all these things and put them to bed all at once. Okay, is that all right with the council? Because as we take piecemeal, it gets very confusing, at least to me, of just where we're going and how we're going to pay for these things.
Technically, the bids for the shelter are the closest bids to expire. The bidding on the shelter was September twenty-eighth, it was officially, originally bid, so we have sixty days from September twenty-eighth. So I had just put down the November twentieth council meeting to be safe, but if we have a special council meeting, I mean, we have a little time to play, so.
Let's take a look at it, see if we need a special one, but- Let's take a look at it and see if we need a special one, but we've got to get all this information together.
I agree.
Because it'd be a lot of, a lot of decisions. Maybe I'm too conservative in taking it piecemeal, but I'd like to look at the, the whole picture.
Okay.
Okay, let's get an update on the installation of the new computer network from Mike.
At the last council meeting, you'd asked to be updated on this and asked also to have some budget items explained. Betty's passing out a summary. I apologize for not having it sooner. I finished this about six tonight, so. When you get this, page number two is a listing of milestones from the first of June through the end of the year. And I'll just briefly highlight a few of them, but if you can see, they're color-coded. The, let's just start with parking. The parking system is in place. It's been received. The parking monitors are using the new system to give tickets. I believe they're pleased with it. It's greatly increased their efficiency. We have some training to do next week and a couple of installations, and that will be completely done. We talked earlier about a solution for spam as part of our network. I instituted that before the network is in place. As you can see, I picked the sample day. We had two thousand two hundred and sixty-seven emails on the twenty-third of October. One thousand nine hundred and eighty-four, we filtered out as spam.
Oh, shoot.
Four viruses, so eighty-eight percent of our email volume is now being filtered out. I, I, the city staff will have to decide how it's working for them, but.
Very noticeable on mine, I'll tell you.
So, that's in place and functional. On the network, all the components have arrived. The room has been identified, prepared, it's been cabled. If anybody's been in there, there are stacks of boxes. All the network components are there. By the end of next week, I'll have the rack, which will hold all of those, and the new routers and switches. As you look at the timeline, the installation should begin on the week of the seventeenth of November, and the network should be completed by the end of the year. That includes all the workstations reconfigured and, and everything, so we're, we're pretty much on track there. I just highlighted there in that timeline, so far since June first, I've averaged between sixteen and twenty-five hours a week to maintain our existing computers, printers, and other equipment.
Can you elaborate on that, Mike? That's an awfully high number.
Sure. Let me, this is standards from the Gartner Group and a company called Star Active. They did a study on, in a corporate environment, what it takes to maintain a system. There are four major things that cause a need for maintenance, and actually, there's five. Four of them that happen to make maintenance occur, and a fifth one that doesn't happen, preventive maintenance. The first is viruses and Trojans. On average, in a corporation, there are two-point-oh occurrences per workstation a year, taking an average of two hours of IT time. For system problems and issues, somebody's printer doesn't work. I've had two of those today. Their printer doesn't work. That happens on average of one-point-one times a year per workstation, and it takes an hour and a half to fix. And these are industry standards. A catastrophic occurrence, and what's called a bare metal reinstall, basically starting from scratch on a machine, will happen on average, a half of occurrence per computer per year, and that takes six hours of IT time. So, that's if, if, for example, we've had some Trojans on our machines that are so bad, the only solution is to wipe them out and start from scratch. Lost or damaged files occur four-point-six times a year, and it takes a half hour. And then preventive maintenance, which we're not doing, should be done twice a year and takes two hours of time. Those, those are where, those are the major areas that those things occur. That's the industry standards. I spend a little bit less than that, because we're not doing preventive maintenance at this point, and so if you, if we go on, it'll kind of show you what the hours are for that. But, but that's what it is. I mean, do you want me to get into more detail on it?
No, no.
Okay.
I do, I, I know you're going to expect this, but as administrator of a Macintosh network, we don't have these problems. You know, you'd save a lot of money with Macintoshes. It's too late to get into that, but I just have to, once again, make that.
I understand. On my desk is a Mac. That's what I use to administer all of the systems.
It has no Trojans, and horses, and you don't, you probably never had to do a reinstall, and, I mean, we've never had to do that.
But, but unfortunately, we have approximately now sixty workstations. One of them is a Mac. The rest of them, we have six that are running Windows ninety-eight. That's like driving a twenty-five-year-old car. It breaks down, it breaks down. We have printers that are four or five years old. They just, they, they break down more. So, but I, I, I believe I spend a little less time than that average, probably about a hundred hours in a year or less, but, but it's still a considerable item. If you look at page four, you'd asked, I'd submitted a budget, and you'd asked me to clarify it a little bit. There's two scenarios. The top one is two thousand eighty hours, the bottom one is ten, one thousand forty hours. And actually, if you, you have to reverse those, because I did it late. If you take the top two thousand eighty, that goes at the bottom. I can't do twice as much in half the time, except on really good days.
We were hoping you could.
I need to drink a lot of caffeine for that. The, the current situation with basically one thousand forty hours, the PCs in the network can be maintained. When something breaks, it can be fixed. And the time remaining, if you go to page five, there's about eighty-eight hours a year left over. I could put that in working on the web update. It would take me about a year to a year and a half, or whatever other project was deemed important. What is lost in that, and why I, I don't believe this is, to, to properly run the systems, can be done in less than two thousand eighty. We have systems in every department. The police have four systems that are, in most cases federally or state mandated. They don't, not only get asked if they want them, they don't get asked when they want them. They have them there. An example is a system that was upgraded here this summer, and Melanie went to a two-day training on it, and one day was for users and one day was technical. The technical training did her no good. She doesn't know how to set up databases, and unfortunately, I didn't know about it until after the fact, and so there's a, there's a gap there. The enforcer system, the Portal One Hundred system, are both systems that are run through the state. Right now, there's no support for those. It's beyond the capabilities of the people in the department, or if it isn't, it takes them away from other things. And I guess I'm okay with either one, to just understand that the maintenance is only part of it, but we have people that are doing considerable amount of work that really isn't in their area, they're, they're playing it by ear, and they're often doing a good job, but it takes them away from their time. I think the staff probably needs to, you know, can advocate for or against that a little bit better. And the other component, as I said, we could complete the website in about six months, and we could do some user training. Quite often, a half hour of training will save two or three hours of problems later. So, that's why I presented two budget proposals.
I think, Mike, you've done an outstanding job in bringing us to where we are today. This will be a budget item, whether your job will be part-time or full-time, right?
As of right now, it's in the budget, still at the part-time, just, you know, because I don't have the authorization to whatever, but I'll make a note to put in the budget document. Again, I'll reiterate those costs so that you can make that as part of your decision.
Right. I hate to keep repeating myself, but this is really the year where I don't know how we can add another person full-time. It's unfortunate. I think Mike's doing an excellent job. I think he's had some great recommendations. However, maybe we can continue, this is up to you, on the part-time until we get out of this levy limit, and then we'll make the appropriate changes. And I'm sure all of you have something to say on that. I just brought that deal forth.
Any more questions or comments?
I want to thank you for bringing us up to, to date, Mike.
Mike is doing a great job.
Yes.
He is. And just for reference, his, the new IT department, if you want to call it, is off at two eleven back where the storage room used to be, so if you're down here.
Which Leslie was designed for the attorney's office, and he's taken over that. It, it's been used for years for storage, but stopping, paying a visit, he's done an excellent job in, in converting that storage area to a rather nice office. Okay? Any other comments, questions? Let's go to new business. Request St. Croix Commercial LLC for easement agreement to construct the sign at twenty-nine ten Enlum Street.
This agreement's similar to others that we've done, where a sign may be placed over an easement area. I told Croix Commercial that it would be supportive of this if the sign was constructed in a way that could easily be removed, and they've agreed to that. The locations, the best location for the sign on the parcel, again, similar to other, there is a provision in the agreement, the city retains the right to sign the, sign, or has the right to, to have the sign relocated outside of easement at the expense of the property owners. The city determines that city needs require such relocation and other common provisions that we've had in these types of agreements.
Move for approval?
Second.
Any discussion or questions? Everything in order? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried.
And they, they have signed the agreement, just waiting city signature, so.
Thank you, Danny. Before we go into closed session, communications and recommendations. The mayor, I'd like to make appointment to the Hudson Area Joint Library Board. Don Leslie has resigned from the joint library board, and I'm appointing Ms., Ms. Sarah Smith, nine twenty-seven, Third Street, for the remainder of Mr. Leslie's term through December of two thousand and seven. Need of confirmation of motion?
Move to confirm.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion's carried. What do we got left here? Communications and items for future agendas without discussion. Any alter person?
I'd like to ask Catherine, when you talked about that Class B beer and Class C wine, we had to make the contingency that they bring us their license. Can we just add that to our?
Yeah, I think we should just, well, I don't, it's in our ordinance, but just in our, in Nancy's procedural checklist, just make sure they have a copy of the license, then we know they've got it and we won't.
Okay, so nothing we need to do.
No, I don't think so. It's a requirement of the ordinance.
Phil, add it.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Go ahead, Randy.
I just have a question either for Jim or Paul on the follow-up on that donated sign up on Vine Street, the automatic one. Has that been put up?
What sign?
The automatic sign for, on Double Vine, that was from Three M, that was donated?
I haven't heard anything, I don't know what status that, that.
Well, I think what we were waiting for is, Angela, weren't you going to come forth with that study?
The Vine Street study?
Yeah.
So, it's on the next, it'll be on the next.
We're waiting for that, Jim, before we moved into.
Well, Three M had a donated, a, a trial.
Well, that's, that's continuing. As a matter of fact, I had a discussion with Sergeant Marty today, and they are going to bring the sign out here for a test.
Right.
Three M test, so that will be added to that area, but aside from that, we need the, that study.
Right, yeah, that was, that was discussed at the last public safety meeting, and Marty was instructed or asked to follow up with that, and obviously, he had.
I talked to him today, and he's, he's got Three M, gonna, gonna bring one over.
And Deb also has a grant request form for the, was it drive-by Safe School Route, or I don't remember the exact title of it.
Yeah, that's all in the process.
All the process, too, so.
I, I think that gets rather involved. You've got to include the city, the school, defining some routes to each school, and it takes a little while to, to do that, but he's looking into it. He, meaning Sergeant Marty.
Correct. I'd like to thank all those who participated in our democratic process yesterday. Over forty-one hundred people, residents, voters of Hudson, turned out to vote, and I want to thank them for being diligent and exercising their right.
Yeah, how many do we have here versus out at the government center ballpark?
Just under seventeen hundred here.
And just over twenty-four hundred up there.
Out there.
And that's, we did look, I didn't check out there, one of the poll workers asked me, and for the last presidential, we were at just over nineteen hundred. So, this was pretty close to what we had at the presidential, which is somewhat unusual. Usually, there is a, a gap.
Many people thought the vote was about the president.
I'm guessing this is probably about a.
Could be a little bit about Madison, too.
Yeah, well, a lot of the, a lot of people came out to vote for those amendments, which are very controversial as well.
I'm guessing this is about a fifty to sixty percent turnout, I mean, without looking specifically at the numbers.
I think so, the over fifty percent.
City Attorney?
Nothing here.
City Administrator?
Just to add on to what Scott was saying, as always, we'd like to express our appreciation to the very dedicated election workers that put in very long days and worked very hard, and everything ran very smoothly. We did have, we had to have more ballots printed, and, but everybody kept up, and, you know.
They can print ballots at the county now, right?
We get, we ordered some, and they have the capability of printing additionally. All the jurisdictions were out there having ballots printed, because the turnout was higher than what was anticipated, or, but it's usually based on the previous gubernatorial election, and the turnout was much higher, so.
Okay, we're going to go into a close, oh, yes, I have a little. Reevaluation status. This is from Mike Wallace. I would appreciate if you could mention at the meeting tonight that the two thousand and six notices of assessment went out in the mail this afternoon. I think that the council, council members would appreciate a heads-up that they may be hearing from our constituents. Open book dates are Wednesday, eleven fifteen, through Friday, eleven seventeen. Call for an appointment to meet with an assessor if so needed.
And the Board of Review, I think it's November twenty-eighth?
Twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth.
Right, twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth.
So, there will be swift resolution?
Absolutely.
Of anything that's disputed.
I got mine today, and, oh, never mind.
Oh, welcome, welcome to reality, Jack. Am I, am I going to be seeing you here at the Board of Review then?
I'll be appearing and reviewing.
Residents of District two, three, and, and six are probably happy to share, let you guys share some of the tax burden in the city, so.
Well, there, there is, there are the valuation adjustments, you know, in the older areas of the community, because evaluations of those ones have gone up substantially from when they're assessed. That's where there will be more increases, on average.
But maybe even our low rate, we've been paying a lot longer than you have.
Yes, that's debatable.
We're going in closed session pursuant to Chapter nineteen, point eight-five-one-C Wisconsin Stats, to consider a request from wastewater treatment plant superintendent for Sally adjustment.
Someone?
I'll second that motion.
Roll call vote, do we need?
Yes.
Yep.
O'Malley?
Yes.
O'Connell?
Yes.
Adam Acker?
Yes.
Morset?
Yes.
Yes.